Okay, I'd like to call the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission for May 6, 2021, meeting to order. The agenda for today's meeting was approved at the last meeting, which was held on April the 15th, where we were hearing public comments for case number 821. In brief, case 821 is a request for a zoning change from agricultural use to a residential PUD. The decision is for this board to determine if the parcel is suitable for the zoning change. Your zoning commission here is made up of volunteers who review cases and make recommendations to the trustees. The trustees are your elected officials. They review our recommendations and can vote in any direction they deem appropriate. Our decision is one step in a larger process. All residents will have another opportunity to express opinions to the Green County Commissioners and also to the Board of Trustees. To be clear, this meeting is a continuance with the public portion of the meeting open at the request of this board. The reason for that was the hour was late and we wanted to make certain that we took our time to make thoughtful decisions. We intend to facilitate due process for the applicant and to objectify decision-making and not delay with biased outcomes. That being said, we felt three issues needed to be addressed before the public portion was closed. And I'll go over those three issues just as soon as we do roll call.
Mr. McNamee? Yes. All right. We have quorum. So, the three issues that need to be addressed before the public portion is closed. One was letters that were received by the township office. Second, the determination of board's full disclosure. And the third is an opportunity for any residents in support of the project to be heard. And to that end, the public portion will be closed once the board is satisfied that these three items are clear. So to begin, regarding the letters that were received by the township offices, they were received by the board prior to the last meeting, and those submitted to the board at the last meeting were also placed in the applicant or the file, the parcel request file. Therefore, any board member, unless you have a question about any of those letters, we will not review them at this time. Do any of you have any questions? Hearing none, I'm satisfied with the issue in being resolved. Are we all in agreement? Okay. Second, regarding full disclosure of the board members, is there anyone on the board who has a conflict of interest in this case and plans to recuse or abstain the vote based on any such conflict? Okay. I'm satisfied that item number two is resolved. Now for the last issue, an opportunity for any residents in support of the project to be heard, and we have some ground rules for tonight. So to maintain consistency between our meetings, the following will occur. First, if the staff has any updates or comments since the last meeting, they will present them. Second, if the applicant has any updates or comments since the last meeting, they will present them. If you spoke at the last meeting, you will not be given the opportunity to speak at this meeting. If you did not speak at the last meeting, you will be given two minutes to speak. You simply go to the podium, use the mic to state your name and address, and wait for our timekeeper, Tori, to look over the roster and then to begin the timer. And Tori's still at the back checking some people in. We ask that you not iterate the same comments as we were at the point of saturation on the themes of density, traffic, including ingress and egress, health and safety, welfare, including zoning code number 17.069, public safety, environmental impact, including sewer and water, the taxing of ancillary systems, including zoning uses and overall aesthetics. And finally, a word of caution, with the number of people here, civility, of course, is the expectation these days, right? So we ask that all residents do not participate in heckling, clapping, or other such group activities. So, let's begin. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a few things that I'd like to reiterate as we get back into this after a couple of weeks to focus what we're talking about. So, just a couple of points. The first is that the purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the particular use, which is single-family residential homes, is appropriate for the parcel in question. That is what we need to answer here. Specific details about the configuration and number of homes are reviewed during the specific site plan approval process. That involves at least another two public hearings, and it will happen following a This parcel is identified as being expected for residential development in the township's comprehensive land use plan, which was last updated in 2012. This parcel is identified as being expected for residential development in Green County's land use plan, which is called Perspectives 2020, which is Brendan print since 2000. The existence of two stubs streets at Kingsway and Fair Trail is an additional signal that the parcel in question was planned for eventual residential development. And the existence of residential neighborhood uses to the north, east, and west, along with some residential use to the south, signals that the parcel in question is suitable for this use. One other thing I want to address, because I think maybe there's a misconception about why density is calculated and why it matters. Density of a parcel or a neighborhood is the calculation of the total number of dwelling units divided by the total number of acres in a parcel. Density affects much more than the potential lot sizes in a new development. Actually, impervious surface coverage is the primary concern when we evaluate density of residential developments. That means how much pavement, how much material that doesn't allow rainwater to soak into the ground. That is what we are concerned about when we talk about density. So, it's important to note that the township strives to remain at a total density of not more than 1.8 dwelling units an acre for the entirety of the unincorporated area. So all over the boundary of Beaver Creek Township, we strive to be at 1.8 dwelling units per acre or less. We can achieve that even though there are some densely packed neighborhoods like Hunter's Point, which is about 1.74 dwelling units per acre. There's even higher densities in some areas, some PUDs approaching above 2 dwelling units per acre. But because some of the area in the northeast is mostly farmland, the total overall density remains below 1.8 acres. So, when we calculate density in a PUD, any area in the parcel that is not going to have impervious surface on it is still part of that denominator for density. That is not some sort of trick. That is how density is calculated across all PUDs in the township. So it's important to recognize that. Open space is essentially land that will not contribute any impervious surface to the overall calculation for the township. So those are just some points I wanted to clear up. Thank you for your time. Do you have any other questions or anything for me? Sure.
It's on. Yes, it's on. Okay, cool. You'd think with all the karaoke singing I do, I'd know if my microphone's on or not. So, Max, I got a question for you, just so I'm clear. You know, I had a chance to look at the resolution a little more carefully, and I want to make sure I understand, we are here today because we are involved in the first stage of the two-stage review process of 17.05.5, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And we're at the part where we, the zoning commission, reviews and makes recommendation on the PUD zoning classification application in accordance with section 17.06.4, 5, and 6 of the resolution, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Now I want to hear from the applicant, if they have any updates.
Testing, 1, 2, 3. Good. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the zoning commission. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. My name is Michael McNamie. I'm legal counsel for the applicant in this matter. I'll try to keep my comments brief and comply with the chair's direction. If I go afoul of that, please let me know. Where I'd like to start is the importance of 17.06.9. And I'm not going to talk about the substance of that, but there are several comments made that our application should be denied because we cannot meet those 10 criteria set forth in that particular section. And if you'd like to follow along in the packet that I handed out, I do have that code provision under tab 3, if you'd like to look at that. And if you look at 17.06.9 in isolation, I would have to agree, there's no way we can meet those criteria. But there's a reason for that. Most of those criteria are embedded in findings that are specific to the specific site plan. So when you interpret a zoning resolution, and it's a well-settled matter of law, you have to look at the document in its entirety. And when you interpret it, you try to give meaning to every section. So if we looked at 17.06.9 in isolation, what would happen? Well, you would eliminate the two-stage process that Mr. Hung was alluding to during his questions. So Max, so, pardon me. And so really, in terms of the specific criteria, that's not decided to the second phase. And if you look at the specific site plan phase, and if you look at the last sentence... Were we cut off? Or, okay, thanks. If you look at the last sentence of 17.05.51A, the first stage, the very last sentence, it kind of corroborates the logic that I was just speaking of. And it reads, "A specific site plan shall be submitted and approved prior to the issue of a zoning permit for the subject property." So again, that's a specific site plan before you can get to that phase. So I'll say nothing else about that. The second issue I'd like to discuss briefly is one that Max brought up, because several citizens made comments, and it's very natural. "I moved here because I didn't want this type of development behind me. Hey, I spoke to some folks, and they said this farm will never be developed." Well, there are indicators, and they're not easy to find, but if you're making an investment and that's important to you, you should do your due diligence. The first are actual physical sub streets. We've got that in Kingsway and Fair Trail. The second is related to that, and you'll find that under tab 2, and that is the county thoroughfare plan. And what I did in tab 2, I went to the website, took excerpts from the thoroughfare plan. And so the first one I have is through Fair Trail, and there's actually two sub routes through Fair Trail. Traybine to Turfland to Fair Trail, and Agnew to Scottsdale to Turfland to Fair Trail. And you see the stub on the thoroughfare plan. Turn to the next page. This is Kingsway. Again, you have two sub routes, Fairground Road to Kingsway, Traybine, Camaro Trail to Kingsway. And item last, as Max also referenced, is go look at the comprehensive land use plan. This property has been designated for residential development from at least 2000, if not before. So in trying to prepare, after last hearing, I thought I wanted to get some more history behind me. And so I requested some documents, and it was provided with several. And one that I found interesting really explains how did we get to where we are right now. And if you go to tab 4, these are the minutes from the zoning commission when Stone Hill Village was first approved by the zoning commission. And that's August 19, 1993. And I have tabs on the bottom of the page so you can turn to the areas quickly. And if you would turn to the second red tab, and that's on page 5. And I'm not going to read the entire section, and I'm sorry that I was just able to get this to you today, but it was on page 5 and continues on page 6. And it begins at the highlight, that's Mr. Dave Breckhart. Now Dave was a zoning expert, worked for Wolford Engineering, and he represented Mark's father, Ray McIntyre. And Ray had his engineer speak at the meeting, saying, "Look, I have some concerns here with the configuration and some of the width of the roadways, so maybe you could take this to heart and help this piece of property." And the first thing he pointed out, that he needed another point of ingress and egress out of Stone Hill, or the traffic nightmares will ensue. And the other thing that he indicated, that the thing was Fair Trail, said, "The Fair Trail is way too narrow. We need to get that wider so there'll be smooth ingress and egress from that particular point." He goes on to state that the township land use plan had the property designated for residential development. And then he also referenced a point, apparently there is a development known as Hickory Hollow Estates, and there was supposed to be a stub from Hickory Hollow, and that never occurred. So Mr. McIntyre raised the issues up front. He saw them, but for reasons not known to me, at least not in these minutes, I'm not sure why none of that occurred. And just briefly on health, safety, well, no, no. Let me just conclude there. What we're asking the commission to do is approve this application for the first stage as modified by the recommendations made by the township zoning staff. Thank you for your time and attention.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions that they'd like to ask Mr. McNamie?
Thank you. Thanks, Mike, for coming down. If you want to go back up there, I got a couple of questions for you. So Mr. McNamie, just, I have a series of questions here based on my review of these new documents that we got today. And I apologize if I'm a little disjointed because I just got them. First things first, would you agree with Mr. McConnell that in this application process, we have to start with 17.05.5? And that section in 1A tells us that the zoning commission, you know, we have to make a recommendation on a PUD zoning classification in accordance with sections 17.06.4, 5, and 6. Would you agree with me?
Yes, with an asterisk. Yes, with an asterisk.
Okay. What's the asterisk? It's like steroids, right, in baseball? So what's the asterisk?
Let's see. And this gets back to, you have to read the zoning resolution to give all provisions. Meaning, if you look at 17.06.6, that's on the next, that's on page 107, that's the last page in the...
Yeah, I'm looking at it, yep.
And right in the last sentence, it states, well, it's run-on sentence, "Before making a recommendation, the zoning commission shall find the facts submitted as presented at the public hearing in modifications, amendments, et cetera," criteria are consistent with the approval as per section 17.06.9.
Yes.
But again, that's in a different section. It's not in the 17.05 section, so...
Right, but 17.05.5 directs us to look specifically at 17.06.6 when we make our recommendation, right?
That is correct.
And that section tells us to look then at 17.06.9 for the 10 points that we have to evaluate this application on, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe the first sentence in 17.06.9 is, I quote, "A planned unit development zoning classification shall only be approved when the following criteria are satisfied." And there's 10 criteria.
Correct.
So you'd agree with me then that as we're here today, we do need to look at all 10 of those and make findings based on what's presented to us today as to those 10 points, correct?
I'm not sure I'd concur with that.
Okay.
I think that's in the second stage where that's examined.
Okay, but if it was a second stage, wouldn't it say something along the lines of "A specific site plan shall only be approved when the following criteria are satisfied"?
I'm sorry. John, one more time?
No problem. If that were true, wouldn't you agree with me that if the 10 criteria are only supposed to relate to a site plan, that the resolution itself would say, "A specific site plan shall only be approved"? But it says, "A planned unit development zoning classification shall only be approved."
Well, site plan and the zoning application itself, the first stage and the second stage combined, yes.
But we're supposed to look at this in order to figure out the first stage, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing I want to ask about is this, and I don't want to go back to the transcript of the zoning commission meeting back in 93, where you were talking about what Mr. Dave Breckhart said.
Correct.
And my understanding is that when Mr. Breckhart, in this section that you've highlighted, talks about a 27-foot wide street stub, he's referring to Fair Trail, is that correct?
That is correct.
And when he's talking about a 22-foot wide road, he's talking about, I think it's Kingsway, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, in reading this entire section, though, I'm reading it as that Mr. Breckhart is saying that based on the size of these particular roads, that there would be a problem with traffic going through a development in the McIntyre property if it exceeded 100 residential lots. Isn't that correct?
No, I don't think that's correct, John. What he's, in the 100 residential lots, that was before utilities were available to the property. And so I think that was a number to be developed as you had to have leach fields, well water, and things of that nature.
Okay. I think it's a fair reading. I guess I may have misled, because I'm, you know, we are reading a transcript from somebody else that occurred, you know, what, almost 30 years ago? But, yeah, 30 years ago. But, you know, when I'm reading this, there's a sentence here that sticks out to me, and it says, "He said the latest plan shows one 27-foot wide street stub to provide access from Stone Village, and that would most likely be inadequate to service the McIntyre property if similar development occurs on the property as what surrounds it. There is the potential for up to 100 residential lots to be developed on the McIntyre property and could generate up to 1,000 vehicular trips per day with a significant amount of that at peak hours. With the only access being the 27-foot street stub and the 22-foot wide road which was stubbed from the Beaver Hills estate, this could pose a serious problem. This problem is made somewhat more serious because of the sub-street plan which was proposed from Hickory Hollow Estates was never built as planned." So as you mentioned before, there may have been another access point that could have existed but never came to fruition, right?
Right. And if you go down further in the text, he asked that the commission require two access points from Stone Hill Village into the McIntyre property. And that's fairly commonly done when you know you have sequential properties that are going to fall to the development dominoes.
I understand that. But were there, I mean, are there two access points into the development area, into Stone Hill Village?
Not from Stone Hill Village.
So it's still...
You've got Kingsway and Fair Trail.
Okay, thanks. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Horton, do you have any questions? Any question? I do, but I think I'll pause at this time and move on to listening to the residents. So at this time, if there is anyone who did not speak the last time, let me back up a minute. Ordinarily, what we do to be consistent is listen to anyone in support of the project or the application to please speak. Please, you may come up, go to the mic here, and come together. It's wonderful. Over to the podium and state your name and address, and then Tori will give you the time that you are asking. So I want to clarify with you guys, you want to do it separate or you're going to do it together? So you want three minutes, or am I going for six for two people?
Six is fine, I guess.
Okay, great.
We're both with the same organization. Can you hear me okay? That's better. My name is David Nolan. I'm the president of the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association. Our office is located at 1981 Dayton-Zenia Road in Beaver Creek Township. And also introduce, let my counterpart introduce himself.
I'm Jim Amon. I'm a retired professor from Wright State and the technical advisor for the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association.
The Beaver Creek Wetlands Association has a purchase contract to purchase the 58.32 acres of wetland along Beaver Creek from LSRM McIntyre Limited Partnership. Our organization has received a Clean Ohio grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission of $476,000 toward the purchase of the land and making significant improvements in the form of ecological restoration and construction of a new boardwalk through the property that will be open to the public. The contract is contingent on the landowner retaining the ability to use the land that is being sold to us as designated open space in a planned PUD to develop other parts of the farm. In light of this, the Wetland Association would like to go on record that it supports using the 58.32 acres, or supports it being counted toward the required green space for this PUD application.
I've worked personally with a number of developments over the years, I guess. Take this thing off. And what we've seen as an organization, as the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, that the best way to get things done is to work with all concerned. Protection of the wetland really comes with the development of the site plan. What we're asking for here at this meeting is to change the zoning. And the zoning is something that doesn't really provide anything but a change in the designation of how the plan is going to be used. So we don't have any reason to oppose the development of this land as a PUD, since the site plan will address all of our concerns. Those concerns are things like lighting, stormwater runoff, and density, water, sewer, those kinds of things which have the potential, if done incorrectly, to damage the health of the wetlands. All right, thank you.
Questions? Question? I have a question. Tell me, when you said at the PUD development, at the site plan development, what the stormwater conditions would be, what kinds of things are you interested in when it comes to the wetlands?
Stormwater is, has to be controlled. Otherwise, we get problems with erosion, sedimentation, and if the stormwater is contaminated with chemicals and things like that, it has the possibility of impacting the wetlands. But there are rules for the way those kinds of things should be put together, and there are technical manuals that show what will be safe and what will not. We're concerned with the volume and the rate of water... Otherwise we get problems with erosion, sedimentation, and, and the, if the, if the stormwater is contaminated with, with chemicals and things like that, it has the, the possibility of impacting the wetlands. But there are rules for the way those kinds of things should be put together. And there are technical manuals that show what will be safe and what will not. We're concerned with the, the volume and the rate of water being dumped into whatever it's, place it's going. It could be the creek, it could be the wetlands themselves. But almost always it's going through a retention basin of some sort for a period of time. And if that is constructed according to things like the TR-55 manual for, for stormwater, then, then it usually meets our, our needs.
So in making decisions about the use of the land today or when we close the public portion of the meeting, we consider conditions at that time and we also have a process in the second stage where work sessions can occur. In your experience in working with zoning for PUD development, what is, have you learned anything along the way that we can do to facilitate if we were to approve this?
I, I think we could get into a lot of technicalities, but.
I'm looking for, is, is there any kind of condition and/or would, can anything that be done next be done in a work session?
I had a hard time understanding that. The question, sound wise, not, not what you're saying.
Is this? I'll, I'll talk slower and deeper.
Yeah, okay.
So in your experience in working with zoning change, is it best to have conditions applied at the concept level at this first stage versus at the second stage doing work sessions?
Are you talking about, talking about conditions at this meeting?
If we were to apply any conditions for this property to be accepted or approved for the PUD, is there any condition that would benefit the wetlands versus waiting until the second stage and doing it through work sessions?
Yeah, I, I think that the work sessions are, are important. These, these conditions can be very complex. And usually every development has something different about it. And my experience has been to work with people in, in work sessions to work out the details. When I'm saying people, I'm talking about both the officials of, of the township and the developer in conjunction with one another, a back and forth so that we understand what is, what is good for, for one and what is, was good for another. What we try to do is, is, is reach some point where the development can take place, but we very often put limitations on what that development can be or do. So, so that's a, you know, that's a natural kind of thing. I can, I can think of the Hunter's Point decision that we had several years ago where the, the developer wanted to develop all the way down to the edge of the creek almost. But we said, no, we would like to have a buffer. And, and in the reality, that buffer, we, we said, well, with that buffer, you could still count that as, as your, your, your space. So the, the density wouldn't change. And you'd have less streets to build and less expense in building in streets and gutters and storm drains and all that kind of thing. So, so, you know, you, you, you have this exchange of information. There are sometimes better ways to do things. You always look for alternatives.
How about this? You direct the question to me, I'll ask them. Is that acceptable? Thank you. Excuse me a moment. I apologize, I can't hear you. Oh, I understand. Thank you. I apologize. Is it going to start squeaking if I go past this? Oh, could you please state your name?
Okay, I'm Dennis Mackay. I'm in Beaver Hills Estates. That has nothing to do with my question, however. So if I understand this correctly, ma'am, the request that is ongoing states that the 58 acres, more or less, that is going to the wetland is now considered as green space for the development. In other words, the development is 178 acres, correct? 58, which is already going to be considered as green space. I would think that would impact the density because you're now considering 178 acres versus 120 acres. I would think that would impact the runoff and all that kind of stuff that would directly impact the wetlands as there's now more housing going to be allowed because the 58 acres is now considered part of the development versus 120 acres. So that's the question I have. Seems like this is a precursor and impacts, would impact the wetlands and more runoff because you would have more houses when you consider 178 acres versus 120 acres.
Okay, thank you. So I think his question is, is that an impact?
Yeah, I, I think what we're, we're looking at is, is a little confusing, but the, the amount of, of roads, houses, roofs, driveways and all of that thing would not change. That's what causes runoff. It's the impervious surfaces that, that affect the runoff. So I don't see that there's any, any change.
Another point is that the, the landowner is selling us the land now. It doesn't have to. The landowner could retain the property and use it all, use the green space for this purpose on their own. It would nullify our acquisition. But it's, you know, it's something that they could do anyway.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Okay, let's move on now to the members of the public who are against the application. But I want to remind you that if you spoke the last time, we are not going to entertain that. So this is open now to anyone who did not speak the last time. Again, state your name. Two minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Donald Alley. I live at 1710 Kingsway. What I want to state is, people move to neighborhoods for whatever reasons, whether it be a quiet neighborhood, whether it be the ability to get out and enjoy the environment and all that. And what I need from each one of you, put yourself in our place, okay? If you can unequivocally say that you agree with this debacle, please nod yes or no, because I'm thinking if you put yourself in our place out on Kingsway Drive, you would unequivocally say no, positively. You would not want to allow another thousand cars to go up and down your road. I am a person that gets out and I walk, jog, walk my dogs. And with this housing development, there's no way I can do that safely. It'd be like me running down Trayvon. So I want you to put yourself in our place because y'all, y'all are here to support y'all's community. And if you can honestly say that you agree with this, good on you. But I guarantee you, whether you agree or not, you would positively disagree with this housing development. Another thing. With this development, it's not going to be long before the county comes asking to put sidewalks down our yard. That is unfair. We shouldn't have to give up an inch of our land for Mr. McIntyre to build his property. Absolutely not. That's not why we moved to that subdivision, and that's not what we want. And you can sit there and say you won't do it, but as time goes on, there will be sidewalks and y'all will come take piece of our land. And that will impact our acreage and that will impact our property value. Thank you.
Susan Richardson, at 1395 Huntley Corn South. And you're right, that last meeting was a long meeting. So I'm going to make another point on traffic. This is actually the, one of the contingencies for the buyer to, to, to sell the land. And this was initially given us, to us as Exhibit E, number four. The retention of the buyer, this is what the, the purchase was contingent on. Okay? Retention, this is number four. Retention of the buyer's right to have access of the property from Ankeny Road via the seller's adjacent property for maintenance and monitoring only as long as the seller owns the adjacent property. So what that tells me is that there is some access from Ankeny Road into this new development, perhaps a, a way to get into it or at least a temporary road for the construction of all of these homes. Thank you.
Good evening, Carl Hedrick, 1650 East Slater Court. Ready? Okay. I am here in opposition of this RPUD zoning. Given time constraints, the details, dates, records, recorded deeds and names of what I'm about to say is going to be in my written testimony that I'll provide you. I've done some research in the Green County property records on this property in question. I found some things that I think you need to know. There are two easements into this parcel, parcel from Ankeny Road. They are not usable in the current sense, but they are there. And it's identified in the, in the platte that I'm going to give you. LRSM McIntyre Limited Partnership was created in December 2000. Also at that time, the principles were deeded, this 215-acre parcel. Between March 2010, September 2019, they sold the lots that could provide access to this parcel. The last and the best one being at 1221 Ankeny Road, which was sold in September 2019. We can argue all day long whether or not this parcel is landlocked. I expect that it is not legally because of the sub-streets. But from a practical point of view, driving through other neighborhoods, it is. By selling off the boundary properties, LRSM McIntyre has significantly limited access to this property. Now they want, now that they want to develop it, they want others to pay the price for their lack of planning. I request the zoning board recommend one of two options. Either one, approve this rezoning with the same conditions as Beaver Hills and Hickory Hollow, or deny the rezoning until and unless the primary access can be provided via Ankeny Road with the emergency-only access via Fair Trail and Kingsway. Naturally, compliance with all the elements of criteria for planned unit development zoning approval is required for both options. I do have a question for the board. Is it your intention to provide your recommendation to the town trustee meeting that will be happening on 10 May? Perfect timing.
I'm happy to answer the question. After the public portion of this meeting is over, we have a requirement to act on a decision by the, within 30 days.
Okay.
So I cannot say for certain that that date for that trustee's meeting, that a recommendation would go there.
Okay.
It could. I don't know. I have a crystal ball on what's going to happen tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Scugins. I live at 1547 Stormy Court. My husband and I built our home in 1978. We've lived there for 43 years. Our two sons grew up there and they've enjoyed biking in the streets and riding throughout the neighborhood to friends and others. Never was traffic an issue because the neighborhood was low-density traffic. Our grandchildren now ride their bikes and scooters there. Now Mr. McIntyre wants to build a new development of up to 250 homes with an additional estimated traffic of 2,500 trips per day. To access development, he wants the traffic to enter through our low-density air neighborhood, which is zoned R1AA Beaver Hills. This is a unique situation in that the heavy traffic for his development has to first go through our low-development or low-density neighborhood. This high volume of traffic will cause our neighborhood roads, both Kingsway and Tamara, to change from a safe place for kids to play and bikers and walkers and pet walkers into a major thoroughfare unsafe for any pedestrian to enjoy. Lack of planning on his part to include a direct access to this, his development should not cause our neighborhood to be his access. To minimize the extreme adverse safety and road deterioration his development as presented would have on us, we request the zoning be commensurate with Beaver Hills, which is R1AA. The cost of the adverse effects on our neighborhood from the high volume of additional traffic and resulting lack of pedestrian safety and road deterioration from his development as proposed will be the destruction of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Amy Albert. Amy Albert, 1225 Ankeny Road. I just want to say that none of us are, I, I don't feel personally that I'm against all of this. I'm not quite sure where I lie on the fence, to be honest. Because I know Max, you keep saying that we need to go into details like density, traffic, drainage, all of that at site, or at stage two. However, if you guys give approval at this stage with no limitations, no restrictions, you're asking us to have complete and total faith that it's going to be with regards to what your, your intent, what Mark's intentions are. And I don't know Mark well enough to know whether or not I can trust him with an investment that my husband and I made at 1225 Ankeny and with our lifestyle there. And I know that many of the citizens as well have concerns, like myself. And one of them is Ankeny. And Ankeny is just a 16-foot easement. That is all that lane is. It was never intended to be a thoroughfare, nor do we want it to ever be a thoroughfare. There is also a dangerous curve. And just so we're clear, there have been numerous drive-offs off the triangle onto our private lane as well as a car that would lay in the middle of our lane on its driver's side. And my husband was also hit while using his turn signal to get onto our lane. Using that as an access point for construction or for the development is unrealistic. It is way too dangerous. Now someone had indicated that in regards to the purchase agreement for Beaver Creek Wetlands, that they have, that they would have the right of way to use that easement. That is for, in my understanding, and if not, please let me know. But that's my understanding, is it is solely and only for Beaver Creek Wetlands. Now as a resident, I would prefer that they not even have that easement. We don't want anyone to have easement rights on Ankeny other than the current residents. That's it.
Robert Cunin, I'm at 1544 Stormy Court. I'm glad we're not rehashing all the issues that were as long as my arm. There were half a dozen issues that have already been brought up. We don't need to rehash them, so I won't. I just would like to say that I have written to the trustees directly and copied the Wetlands Association directly. And I have brought copies of this. If anybody's interested in having copies, I'll have them later. And to the zoning board, I would merely say, please don't go forward to the trustees with a win-lose proposition. And that's what you're hearing from the Beaver Hills side of the equation. You're creating a win-lose. We expect there's probably going to be approval of some development. Make it a win-win. Make it a win-win.
I'm Richard Moore. I live at 1566 Stormy Court in Beaver Hills. My wife and I have lived there for 34 years. Neighborhoods and the communities, along with their accompanying infrastructure, are fairly complex systems. You spent a lot of time last meeting talking about the, all the systems impacts of this development on sewage, on water, on environmental impact. We've talked tonight about environmental impact and runoff and all those things. Those are things that need to be, this application needs to be looked at in terms of the larger system. If you don't do that, you end up with what Peter Singy says, "Today's problems," and we've seen this, "are caused by yesterday's solutions." The solutions that we're proposing for today in this meeting will cause tomorrow's problems. So I'd like to at least put that on the table and be aware of that. One thing that's on the table, the elephant's on the table that nobody has addressed, and it may not be appropriate, but what's the impact of a large, high-density development on the school system? Beaver Creek schools have just, we just passed the levy to provide them with operating funds just for the next few, five years, and then we'll have to renew it again. But meanwhile, the school just down the way, we just built it a few years ago, is now using modular classrooms and they're overcrowded and still have a number of students who are out for COVID. So you have to ask the question, what's the impact of this and all the other developments? And where is that decision monitored? Who brokers those decisions for the school system? And that's one thing, you can look at future levies as being inevitable. Meanwhile, I realize that this parcel of development may be a foregone conclusion. The mitigation, the only mitigation I see for all of these issues would be to designate this as R1AA, single development, single family.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is James Spieth. I'm at 1552 Stormy Court. I do not recommend the proposed zoning change be approved because it does not satisfy the criteria for planned unit development zoning approval, specifically criterias number three and four. The proposed development does not minimize impacts on the surrounding existing developments as required by Criteria III. Kingsway Drive currently serves the existing Beaver Hills subdivision and is not designed or built to serve as a thoroughfare for another larger development as required by Criteria IV. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Lavilla. I live at 1635 Kingsway Drive. And I just wanted to bring up that I think this, you know, I've lived here 23 years and this is a unique situation. I've watched so much development, all of Beaver Valley, all of the Trayvine. And all of them had the main county, big, large roads for the in and out. In our neighborhood, it's an R1AA. And building this neighborhood is going to make an extension onto ours. And it just doesn't make sense for all of that traffic to go through our neighborhood. And I know this has been brought out, but I think the contingency should be the new development be a R1AA. I'm not disputing that it should be residential, changing the zoning. But I just think that that needs to be brought up. Like I said, all of our neighbors, we're out walking, there's no sidewalks, there's no lighting. And we like it that way. But I just think that for safety and the quality of our life there, to respect the people that lived there 20 to 40 years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak that has not spoken?
Hello. Dave McIntyre, 1664 Kingsway Drive. I guess I find myself in a unique position because I'm related to the McIntires. As you can tell, I'm not a public speaker either. So I do live, I've lived in Beaver Hills for the past 28 years. I lived in, my wife and I lived in Florida prior to moving back in 93. And when we did that, I was pretty adamant about wanting to move out towards the farm. I grew up on the farm. I was born and raised there until I was 16 years old. I did the hunting, the fishing, the hunting of mushrooms and all that stuff. So I've been out here a long time. So I, you know, I'm more emotional about it than anything. Mark and I had a conversation last week after the meeting. I let him know how I felt. My side of the family is obviously not happy with it at all. There was a point made in the last meeting that my grandparents, that this land was always meant to be into a subdivision. There couldn't be anything farther from the truth. I used to walk home from school. I lived in the farmhouse, my grandmother lived in the newer home. And I'd stop there when I was dropped off on the bus. And many, many a times she said, you know, that Mr. Nutter tried to buy the farm and she had to tell him no. And so she was offered many, many times to sell and she would not sell. The plat we live in, Beaver Hills, when Kostler sold, I remember vividly, she was not very happy about that because that meant that more developments were coming out into the neighborhood. And that's not what we moved there for. So one last thing is, as far as the stub streets and whatnot, I would say that the street on Kingsway was a sub-street more for the DPNL towers that are on the back portion of the land, not as a future development. Thank you.
Good evening. Is that all right? My name is Ann Bader Cosseboon, 1613 Kingsway Drive. I've lived in, I've lived at 1613 for about two years. I just inherited that house, which is Ken Kostler's farmhouse. Some of what I wrote is repetitive, but one thing I wanted to say was to request that our rezoning in Beaver Hills be R1AA. Or I mean, the rezoning to be R1AA with conditions of no public parking for the wetlands. I don't believe the criteria's been met, but that's repeating what a gentleman said about Criteria II, III and IV. Kingsway Drive is not a thoroughfare. In fact, it actually was a driveway to the farm where I live. And it is about 22 feet wide. So that's really all that I needed to add. That's it, thank you.
Hello, I'm Amber Farkas. I live at 1675 Kingsway. I wasn't planning on talking, so I'm a little nervous. But I want you to know that it's not just the residents who have lived there for 20 years and 30 years. We've only lived there four years. And we moved from a very small, busy neighborhood to this road. And we fought for almost a year to be able to purchase our house where our girls could play outside in the yard and we wouldn't have to worry about them. And this going on is going to completely change everything that we worked so hard to get. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob Craven, 1231 Homestead, a couple houses off of Fair Trails. And so as I look out my front door and I look out onto the farm, I see the high-tension wires going through the middle of the property. And I don't know if that's been discussed in the past and the effects on those that will be living underneath those high-tension wires. And just want to make sure that, you know, that's considered as well as my opposition. Thank you.
I'm Cheryl Cunin. I live at 1544 Stormy Court. I hadn't planned to speak, but I think somebody needs to bring up the fact that nobody in their right mind is going to access this new development via Fair Trail. I would encourage you to go take a ride and look at it. It is not a straight shot by any means. So that means all the traffic will be coming on Kingsway. And that is just not acceptable. That's an estate-type of road. It is not intended as a thoroughfare. And I know of no other new development in Beaver Creek Township that is accessed via that kind of a road. So I would encourage you to go take a look. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amber Terrell at 1500 Huntland Court North. Sounds like we already reiterated a lot about the traffic through Spindletop and before my previous letter. I wasn't aware of what would happen through the Kingsgate area with traffic, but I'm just going to go ahead and stick up for them too and say that that's absolutely not right. I'd hope by now the zoning commission and Mr. McIntyre could see that adding not dozens but hundreds of commuters through our neighborhoods on a day-to-day basis just is completely unjust. But something as far as environmental that hasn't really been brought up that I did address in my letter was a particular area of law with migratory birds, which I'm actually kind of surprised too that the Wetland Commission, who is for this, hasn't even brought up. I'm at Huntland Court North, you guys are familiar with the area. There's a piece of, there's a parcel of wooded land behind me by Kingsgate. I watch birds all day long through there, from Canadian geese, sparrows, and many more. Those are protected under one of the oldest environmental laws. So my hope, and I'm sorry if this was already discussed, is that that would be looked into because that is an area of law, especially if we're just going to look at this in just a black or white matter through a legal realm. So I would like to emphasize that. But yeah, all in all, I think the concerns that as members of the community have brought forth will highlight very valid issues, every single one of us. So I do feel that should be regarded with great empathy. Thank you.
It looks as if there is no one else that wants to speak that has already spoken. So given that, I think that we probably are ready to close the public portion of the meeting. Okay. So Lori, do we need to have a motion to do that? We just are closing the public portion of the meeting. Thank you. What happens next is the zoning commission speaks among ourselves and then starts to make some decisions as to next steps.
Very respectfully, sir, the public portion was just closed. So your comment can not be heard.
Okay, name is Larry Lunder. I live at 1546 Tamara Trail. And I have one basic comment to everybody, is that you are being asked to approve a pig and a poke. And the whole problem is, is you see a blob that represents 180 acres and there is absolutely no data, no entrance, exit, no power, no sewer. Nothing is showing on the data we've published.
Respectfully, sir, thank you. Respectfully, the public portion of the meeting is closed. Okay. We are going to continue to deliberate here. Just so you know, there'll be some discussion. Okay. So at this point, how do you want to do this? Okay. So there are a variety of ways we can do this. We've had discussion that we received the recommendations. We can entertain those recommendations. We have also received a detailed list of the criteria for 17.06.9. You had, Mr. Hung, you had, hold on, just a minute. Okay. Respectfully, those that are in the audience, we are continuing with our meeting. So we do need to have some quiet so that the recorder picks up what we're saying. So if you intend to stay, please do. If you, but if you do stay, please be quiet. If you are not intending to stay, please take your discussions outside of the firehouse. Okay. So as we were talking, like I said, we had received information from the staff with a list of recommendations for the application. We have also received a nice packet from Mr. McNamy, representing Mr. McIntyre or the McIntyre LLC, that lists the criteria. And I was curious, when you were speaking, what premise you finally ended on when it came to the criteria?
Sure, no problem, thanks, Ann. Well, you know, if it wasn't already clear from me grilling poor Mr. McNamy, I'm looking at this as legally as possible, as objectively as I can. And, you know, when there's a resolution with directions, we have a duty, I think, to follow them to the letter that's been put there. Now, my interpretation may be different from Mr. McNamy's. Two very intelligent lawyers can come up with different opinions in the same language. That's why we have business. But that being said, you know, as I look through our criteria, I have my own opinions on whether or not the application as a whole meets all 10 of them. And I think we have to meet all 10 of them based on the language. language. Specifically, I'll point out that right at the top of 17.06.9, it says, and very plainly to me, that a planned unit development zoning classification, which is what we're supposed to be doing today, shall only be approved when the following criteria is satisfied. And then gives us a list of 10. So my thoughts are, when I'm approaching this, is that I need to look at all 10, look in the application and everything that's been said, look at everything that's been submitted, and try to determine if all the boxes have been checked, right? I might not agree with everything in there, but if the boxes are checked, I don't think I've got a choice. I think I have to approve it. So that's the way I'm looking at it, Ann. And I don't know if you have different feelings about it, but I hope that answered your question.
You did. My question was, was that the premise that you ended with? Because that's what you started with. After speaking with Mr. McNamy, I wasn't clear on that. His position, as I understood it, was that 17.06.9 needed to be looked at in its entirety as a PUD site plan, not just because it says the PUD development zoning classification shall be approved. That's the part that's a little bit, you know, it's a little gray to me. So I wondered where you were. Because I think if your premise is what everybody else agrees to up here, would be the logical pathway for us to start to make a decision. However, if we are not correct on how we're interpreting 17.06.9, then I'm feeling like it's a slippery slope for us. That's all.
Well, I mean, again, my interpretation may differ from Mr. McNamy's. And, you know, again, I respect him a great deal, but we may not agree on everything. And when I'm reading the first part of 17.05.5, and it tells me very clearly, first stage, this is what we got to do. Says, okay, the first thing we have to do is see an application or get an application for a PUD zoning classification. We got that, right? And it goes, that zoning application has to meet 17.05.6, 17.06.1, 2, and 3. So they have to meet certain things. And I believe from what Max told us, they meet all that. Okay, they've got that information in there. I'm not contesting that. So then our then position is, okay, now we got to look at this, as a zoning commission, we have to review it and make a recommendation on the zoning classification application in accordance with 17.06.4, 5, and 6. I don't think there's an issue that 4 and 5 have been met. I think what it comes down to is when you look at 17.06.6, it states, all right, that before we can make a recommendation, the zoning commission shall find that the facts submitted with the application and presented at the public hearing, as well as anything through modifications or additions, so anything received today, we got to look at all of it, does it satisfy the standards and criteria of 17.06.9? So that's why I was talking to Mr. McNamy. That's why I want to kind of keep in sequence. Okay, we agree, we start with this step, and we have to go to this provision, and then we have to go to the third provision to get guidance. And I think his interpretation is that we have to have a site plan, or at least when we're looking at 17.06.9, we have to read that and look at it in prior material with a site plan, a specific site plan. But that hasn't been submitted to us yet. And where I disagree with his interpretation is because the last sentence of 17.5.5, the first stage process, it says, "A specific site plan shall be submitted and approved prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the subject property," which suggests to me that you've got to get the classification first, and then you got the specific site plan, and then we move to stage two. That's how I'm reading this. So how can I comply with 17.06.9 if I need to wait for a site plan that's not going to be submitted until after I've been looking at it? And that's where I'm kind of running into a bit of a problem. So I think Seth is going to issue.
The only thing I want to say is the section 17.06.6 states that shall find that the facts submitted with the application and presented at the public hearing and any modifications, amendments, or supplementary conditions satisfy the standards for the criteria stated in 17.06.9. So those points plus any conditions we put on it holistically is what needs to be met in those 10 points. Is my interpretation. No, I'm not saying separate. I'm saying any conditions that we place, if we recommend approval, in addition to what's been presented to us, needs to satisfy all 10 boxes.
Okay, so help me out here, you guys. So if, in fact, 6 says we have to have the conditions, we still are at the same place we were when we first started this conversation. We're going to make recommendations, or we go down this list. We could start with the list, figure out whether or not it meets it. Start with the list, figure out if it meets it, then make conditions based on it with respect to the recommendations that were set by the staff. Okay. Beginning with 17.06.91, "The planned unit development complies with the purpose and the intent of the zoning resolution."
I guess you just pass down the line like a hot potato. You know, I looked this over, and I think this particular application does meet it. I think that the applicant is trying to meet what's in the, and tried to comply with what's in our zoning resolution. I think it's evident because he's been cooperating clearly with Max. I know that they've got a plan to work with the wetlands. So I think that that criteria is met.
I concur. Item number two, "The proposed development promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the township." Flipping the coin, current versus future.
Right. I think this is where we're going to start getting, as I say in law school, the rubber meets the road. I'm not satisfied that the plan as proposed and the information I have in front of me really promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of present inhabitants of the township. I can't speak for future inhabitants of the township, but I think presently, I think it's fairly clear that, you know, we've got these estates in Kingsway. And I know the Stonehill Village area well enough to know that at night, if you're trying to drive down that road at any faster than 15 miles an hour, you're going to hit a car. I mean, it's congested as heck. I don't think the roads there are any wider than 25 feet at best at times. And this hearing transcript that we had received today, I think makes it fairly clear that when Stonehill Village was planned out, they only planned Fair Trail to be 27 feet wide. And even here, the developer for the McIntyre's, Mr. McIntyre's father, I guess, even said, hey, this is going to be a serious problem. Like, you need to widen these roads. And they never did. So if they knew it back then, and nothing's happened, I can't find any reason to not believe that's going to be a serious problem going forward with, you know, especially with what's been suggested with 2,500 cars. I just, I mean, like trips. I just, I find it very difficult to find that this development promotes health, safety, and general welfare.
So one thing that I'm curious about is, we haven't had a traffic study. So where is this number of traffic coming from?
If you don't mind. So Anna Ramirez, who works for Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, provided that average figure of, if you have so many homes, they generate so many trips per day. It's typically about 10 per home per day. So that's where we get from 250 homes, 2,500 trips per day. It's just a kind of an industry standard, I guess.
Thank you.
Next question would be if we require as a condition of approval, the traffic study, is that the only thing that we would need to recommend? Or are there, what else from a health, safety, and general welfare perspective? Or one, does a traffic study contribute towards that?
If traffic study in mind, might give me a better number of exactly what the traffic is going through here, right? But that doesn't address the fact that Fair Trail, if Fair Trail is only 27 feet, that's not going to change. Kingsway is 22 feet. It's not going to change. So those are the dimensions we have to look at. So, you know, if a good way, the estimate tells us 2,500 feet of car trips. And back in 93, they said with 100, you know, lots, 1,000 may be a problem. Again, there's, sorry.
Again, my thought is, there's a dearth of information. If we had more information, if we knew the width, the exact width of everything, rather than looking at documents from 1993 to figure out what the dimensions are, I think I'd be a little more persuaded to, you know, that maybe, yeah, you know, if they're 30 feet wide or 35 feet, sure, maybe you could handle the traffic. But as I said, I've been down to Fair Trail, and I can't, I can't even three-point turn my car on that road. And that's when it doesn't have cars there. So I can only imagine what the development might have. And so, because I think the burden in this case is for the applicant to demonstrate to us that this is going to be okay, or there's no such issues, or promotes the health and general welfare. I think that's why I'm saying no. I don't, I don't think a traffic state is going to help. It will tell us exactly how many numbers will come through, but it will not change the width of the two ways in and out.
So I also wondered if safety was ingress egress in this discussion. Ingress egress came up over and over again. And yes, that can be given to us in a specific site plan. But there would still be a dearth of information as to where that, the impact of traffic on that ingress and egress, would there not be?
Those are just my thoughts. Y'all may think differently. It's fine. But that's just where I'm sitting right now.
Well, I think health and safety always makes us pause, right? And looking at the feedback from the residents, and we know that majority of residents are not involved in zoning decisions unless it's in their backyard or coming down their front lane. We know that. And we have a lot of people all the way around that. How many letters were sent?
I would have to estimate.
Triple digits.
Oh, yeah, over 100.
So that tells you right there, the number of people. We had, we had a, you know, a turnout that represented that. So there we go. Okay, so being more objective about it, how do we take our crystal ball and look at the future? And that is just so hard, right? It's just like the one man said, today's solutions will be tomorrow's problems, but today's problems can also influence tomorrow's solutions. So I don't, I don't, if this were the only one, I could possibly consider some sort of a condition be placed. So can we put this one on? I mean, or are you guys just no, absolutely not, it doesn't meet it with number two? Because I could move on and come back to it and go, well, that, you know what I mean? I could be persuaded, I think.
So I think my concern with that ties directly into number four. I think those are one and the same. When we talk about safety and general welfare of present and future specifically in terms of development. So we can move on from two because I think two and four are, you know, conjoined.
I think we'll get more detailed in our discussion, too. Okay, so let's go to number three. "Proposed zoning and conditions and requirement incorporated within the resolution approving the PUD zoning district provide for minimizing impact on the surrounding development."
I know I always seem like the opinionated one, but I am. See, I think, I mean, I'm with Kristen on this one. I think from my perspective, two, three, and four all wrapped together, right? And I appreciate that we can brainstorm here today on how we can try to fix what seems to be the obvious issue that's at least on my mind. You know, I think that the plan as proposed and the application, there's a lot of things that we can get over. Obviously, we have some solutions with green space. We can work about the density. We can talk about the number of homes. That can be all in a site plan, but the thing we can't change, or at least I don't think I can conceive of a condition to change, is the width of Fair Trail and the width of Kingsway. I mean, these are roads that are already set. You know, we can put conditions to require, for example, I guess, Mr. McIntyre to try to widen his end of the road, but he has not no power to expand Kingsway Drive. He's got no power to expand Fair Trail. And I don't, as such, I don't know how you're going to accommodate the extra traffic. Because I can't think of a way to do that. That's where I run into the struggle bus in approving this. It's, I can't think of anything. So for me, on all three of those things, that's where my boxes are kind of xed.
No? Okay. Two, three, and four. So let's just read four to make sure that we are all, it's for the record, that the site will be accessible from current or planned public fairs adequate to carrying traffic which will be imposed upon them by the proposed development. And it has been of question, I would say, I can't do a percent, but the majority of people brought that theme up over and over again. Two nights, we've listened to it. So, yep.
With the comments here, with this, the summary of density, traffic, I mean, you can look through with the majority of our discussion taking place about traffic and the concern for that, and the concern for safety along that discussion as well. I think that actually supersedes the density, from what I've heard.
We'll pause for a few minutes, correct? Okay, so now we're done. So that takes us to criteria number five. "The potential impacts on public services and facilities can be mitigated by the site and the building design and the benefits which will accrue from the township and the public."
So on this point, I think that the plan, I mean, as proposed, I think that, yeah, this is definitely doable. You know, as mentioned, there's ways to get around. Again, if it's an issue with density, you can always change that, right? We don't know exactly how many houses are going to be approved. We talked about that at the first meeting. And I think there are a lot of benefits from the development that will come. I mean, you'll increase the tax base, and that's always good. So I think that if there is any impact on the public services, that's going to be offset by some of those increases. So I have no issue with the application as to criteria five. I think it meets it.
I think it meets criteria five. Okay, criteria number six. "Existing and proposed utility services for the proposed residential population densities and non-residential uses are or will be available to the project."
Again, on this one, too, based on the plan that I've seen, I think that the application does meet that. I know they're talking about pumping station. There's obviously an issue with overhead wires. I really wouldn't want to live there, but I presume that there's a plan to deal with that. And so with that in mind, I think that's more of a site design issue. So right now, are they available? Yeah, I think so.
Right. And what I hear over and over again is, oh, my gosh, those electric wires. But we have to remember that there are easements underneath those, and nobody's going to build on that anyway. So, I mean, if they do, that's their prerogative. on that anyway. So, I mean, if they do, that's their prerogative, but they're not gonna, they'll be sorry that they did in the long run. Right? So I, criteria number six? Yes? That you think it is met? Yes? Seth? Okay. Number seven. The proposed development complies with the applicable requirements and conditions of section 17.05 of the resolution. And we've had some discussion about that. And do you have that right in front of you, Seth? I know, we're looking for it.
Okay, so, you know, Max, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but I'm looking at the recommendations in the staff report, and there's a recommendation, basically that there doesn't seem to be, at least from staff, any issue as to whether or not it complies with 17.05 and with the requirements and conditions that you've placed on them. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that the recommendations we made here to you are trying to address exactly what you're talking about on two, three, and four. Where they, where the application may fall short, again, because of a lack of information, these recommendations are attempting to make up for that. Specifically, I'll point to the recommendation 2B, which would require an approved, basically an approved traffic impact study by the Green County engineer, approval by the Green County engineer for a traffic study. That could be maybe better worded to include, but this is all, I mean, it's written into our specific site plan approval process, that any site plan would need to be approved by the Green County engineer. So I know that there was a lot of discussion about ingress and egress, but to my knowledge, I don't think there was any discussion by a qualified engineer on that subject. So the only person who can really make that determination is a qualified engineer. If the Green County engineer approves a specific site plan, that should signal to the zoning commission that the traffic questions that are raised here were answered by the configuration of the specific site plan. I don't believe the traffic, the Green County engineer would approve a specific site plan if she thought it was going to bring traffic trouble to her door. I mean, that's not the business that the engineers in typically, so.
I understand what you're saying, Max, and thank you for clarifying that. But so, regarding that, regarding criteria seven, I think that it's been satisfied.
So given that it's been satisfied, I want to, that you believe that it has been, I'll finish that conversation in a minute, but I wanted to react to Max. Perhaps we weren't clear when we talked about, we're going to go down this list, and then we're going to go to your recommendations to see if it satisfies those, so.
Oh, apologies, right.
No, it's okay.
When you asked me about my recommendations, I thought we were there. Apologies.
No, I think that, I think his question was, did it satisfy 17.05? Yeah. Okay.
Are we talking about seven? Yeah, so I agree with seven.
I agree too.
Okay, number eight. Each individual section or subarea of the development, as well as the total development, can exist in a functionally independent environment. In the alternative and at the discretion of the township, adequate assurance has been provided by the applicant and to the satisfaction of the township that would, that such objective will be achieved.
This is like the worst criterion on the list. How are you complete, how is an inanimate object not completely independent from another inanimate object is really what it comes down to. But, I mean, I think what it means is that you're not so dependent upon a particular subdivision that, you know, if that, if it were to suddenly implode or be buried in a portal to hell, you know, whether or not the subdivision could continue. And I have no reason not to believe that this subdivision, if approved, would be able to continue to function, so.
I agree.
I agree.
So this is my whole, my, my thought on this, okay? And it's, this whole writing is rather vague. Can exist functionally independent. What were to happen if one of the streets in one of the neighborhoods was deemed inaccessible? Could it, or both of them, function independently? In most neighborhoods, there is a specific artillery that is connected to a main road that would allow the neighborhood to actually in and out access. However, in this, we are accessing two neighborhoods to access this neighborhood. So I guess I have paused with functionally independent.
I think we have had these situations in the past where we actually don't have a secondary out. And then we don't want to make those decisions, right? But in this case, unless they come with a site plan that tells us there's an ingress and an egress that we have requested, we have no way to determine that. That's my thinking. Your thinking?
I wholly concur. I live at the river reserve. There is one way in and one way out. And every morning, there are school buses there, like every school bus in the county. So it's, like, I understand what you're saying here. And the very least, though, this subdivision would have at least two in and access points. So at least I could say, well, it's better than where I live. So I, but again, I'm not sure if that's exactly what, I understand what you're saying, Kristen, and I agree with you, you know. If the King's Way were to be shut down, does a subdivision function? And I mean, at least they can get out through Fair Trail. I think you'd have to take out both of those, so. But then again, I mean, if you were to take out all of the roads, I think you'd make certain subdivisions inaccessible, so anyhow.
Number nine. We good? We all good now? Number nine. Any permitted conditional or accessory uses excluded from the specified proposed plan unit development are based on the findings in accordance with section 17, 12, 2, 13, 2, 14, 2, and 15, 2 of this resolution.
Yeah, this is a really weirdly worded, I think, criterion, but I think what it means is, you know, hey, restrictions on uses, are they consistent with the resolution? Or alternatively, you know, are you allowing something in there that's not normally permitted? Obviously, you're not going to do that, but, you know, I don't really find any issue with it. So I think criteria nine is met based on the list of accessory uses and conditional uses that was put in the, in the subdivision, especially regarding, I think, trails and pools. I think they're in there, and I think I'm fine with that.
While we're talking about the conditional uses, we heard several members of the communities make a recommendation for residential, approval for residential AA. And just for the record, we are not entertaining that decision merely because that's not what the application was for, correct? Just wanted to make sure that we understood that. Any comments about number nine? Do you have, do you need copy of all that? Yeah, I agree too. Okay. And then the last one is the planned unit development can be substantially completed within the time specified and the schedule of development submitted by the applicant. We, I don't remember seeing a schedule of development, did we?
Yeah, it's in there, actually. It is definitely in there. I had to pause and look for it. So the, apparently, the plan is that they would break ground, I think, around September of 2021, and it'd be a seven-year plan going to 2028. I have no reason to believe they can't do that. So, I mean, it's not like they said, like, 18 months, that'd be impossible. But, you know, seven years, I think it's reasonable for a development of that size.
I do remember reading that, now that you brought that to my attention. You all feel good about that one? Okay, so we have some conditions here that we felt were not met, but as Max had shared, we have some staff recommendations that are intended to satisfy those criteria. So it was criteria two, three, four, and, did we say five? Two, three, four? Okay. And eight. Okay. Do you want to take these recommendations one at a time, or do you want to just talk about them in terms of the criteria?
I would like to do them one at a time and go through the criteria that's possible to be like.
Uh huh. Would you like to lead what you're thinking? Would you like to lead through that? Okay, all right. No, that's fine. No, I can, I can hand it to you. Okay, great. So the staff, of course, felt like it was a suitable space, but they're asking for us to make that determination, right? And it's to allow the 58-acre area to be placed under conservation by the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association that will be counted toward the open space requirements for the PUD.
I'm a little iffy on this one. And I, I mean, but I think that's more of a personal opinion than anything else. So with regard to how, putting that 58 acres in conservation to not only preserve the wetland, but also, you know, to help with drainage, to help with topography and those sorts of issues, I think that although I disagree with doing this, I think it's fair to say that this particular recommendation does kind of meet and help out meeting a lot of the different concerns that have been raised regarding drainage, regarding the wildlife, regarding endangered species. I think it's important. So I think it's important to factor that in. And even though I'm not sure if I would want that to be deducted if, or set towards determining the density of the housing, I think that is a different calculation down the road. So insofar as we're talking about the PUD zoning application like today, I think this helps in that direction, but I don't think it addresses criteria two, three, and four.
Would you all agree with what he has said, or have something more you want to say?
So was it accurate earlier, the comment that we heard from the public related to this 58 acres allows you to have a higher potential house per acre density?
Sure. I guess if my understanding of what was said in the crowd is that if you have a certain number, say 200 houses, 250 houses, whatever it is, on 120 acres versus that same number of houses on 178 acres, that the density of the calculation using 120 as the denominator would be higher, and that's absolutely correct. But as the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association folks mentioned, density is really more about where can impervious surface be erected, found, whatever you want to call it. So open space is, in zoning parlance, really just places that you can't put impervious surface. So to classify the wetlands as open space, I believe, is, I mean, is exactly the, the meaning of open space. Area that will never be, have impervious surface covering it up and therefore adding to the potential stormwater runoff and all the things that impervious surface can result in, again, like the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association mentioned.
Got it. So you could have the same amount of impervious space with more houses versus less houses?
Yeah, exactly. If you, if you spread 200 houses over 200 acres, there's still the same amount of driveway. In fact, there's probably more driveway and more roadway in order to connect all those houses in a larger area versus if you put those houses in a smaller area, yeah, you're going to have the same amount of roof space and, you know, sidewalks and all that. But if nothing else, you'll have less road pavement, which is impervious surface because it's in a smaller area. So I know that's hard to, to wrap your head around for a lot of people, that, that a more tightly packed group of hous, housing is the same density as, on a, on a certain parcel than if those same houses were spread evenly across that parcel. But that is the truth. Density is numerator over denominator, and denominator is the entire parcel. And that's how it's calculated throughout PUDs in the township and the city and everywhere else.
Got it. Okay.
Any more questions about that? Oh, okay.
Could we have, I just want to make sure, I want, because I have the map that we were given. We're talking about this weird R shape, kinda?
I'm going to pull it up here.
Thank you.
All right. So here's the concept plan map that was submitted as part of the application. And go ahead, sorry.
The R part, right? Okay. Thank you. That's what I was curious. Okay.
Oh, this right here?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure what I was looking at was what I was looking at. Okay, thank you.
All right. Number two. 2A, actually. Any specific site plan submitted for the R PUD must include the following information. Proof of communication with the Green County Flood Plane Administrator and a detailed summary of techniques which will be employed when developing in or near the flood plain. When it comes to our criteria, like, that, that to me just makes sense. But when it comes to our criteria, which I lost, because I, she moved that. Oh, here they are. Okay. When it comes to our criteria, two, health and safety and general welfare, I think that, you know, it only addresses part of that. I mean, really. Proposed zoning solution condition requirements incorporated to the resolution approving the PUD zoning district provides minimal impact on surrounding development. There was some discussion about leach bed adjacent to the property. I recall that. Would that, Green County Flood Plane Administrator wouldn't be the only people that would look at a leach bed, though, right?
No, in fact, leach bed would be Green County Public Health.
Public Health and soil.
Soil and water might provide input.
Yes.
But my understanding is that Public Health really is the one who can approve leach fields and their locations.
Right. So that's something that we might want to consider. Just take note of that if, if need be. I'm not sure what that condition would be, aside from inspecting the current leach beds, that people that might be interested in preserving theirs. But I don't even know that that would give credibility to the development impacting them, except that it would be a baseline assessment. So that might be a baseline, contingent on a baseline assessment of those leach beds by the adjacent properties, by the health department. Just a thought. Traffic impact study, which has been approved by Green County Engineer. We have talked about that as being a qualified engineer could be the only one that would make the distinction or the determination on ingress and egress. Here we are. Does it, does that help meet two, three, and, well, I guess it would be more four. Four, two and four, because those were kind of wrapped together. What does that do for you, Chris? Does it meet it?
I'm going to say yes, because I think that's a very important part of this. I think that we're missing out. I think that saying is putting the cart before the horse. And like we've talked about with the sizing of the streets, I think that's a big issue. So I think if we had something like that to go on, we'd be able to better look at two and four actually meeting criteria.
Yeah, so I'm, again, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm obtuse. I'm not going to lie, I can be obtuse. But the way I'm reading this is, you know, where we're sitting here today in approving this application, we need to look at all 10 criteria. And I could first say, hey, we don't have the information, so we're going to deny it. But, or I'm not going to recommend it. We're not denying anything today. But I mean, for me, when I look at this is, okay, you get a traffic study, that's fantastic. Now I know exactly how many cars are going to be coming down here. So what? That doesn't change the width of King's Way Drive. That doesn't change the fact there's no sidewalks. That doesn't change that Fair Trail is a horrible place to drive if you're down there late at night. It doesn't change any of that. We don't know anything about the, I mean, if you have gone down that area, invite you, or we haven't, I invite you to, because there's very little lighting, number one. There's very little street lighting there, and you can easily get, you know, hit things. And I know that from personal experience. So not that I've hit anything, it's just, it's just very dark. So I don't see how a traffic study by an engineer necessarily tells me anything other than whether or not there's a lot of traffic. It may make some recommendations as to what to do in order to meet some of the needs that have that traffic. But then the question that comes up is, how are you going to go ahead and change the ingress and egress? How are you going to change? How are you going to change Kingsway Drive? There's no power for Mr. McIntyre to do that. There's no power for him to change Fair Trail. They are what they are. And so, you, you know, if the engineer does come, does come out and says, hey, these roads are, you know, satisfied, satisfactory, that's fine. But I doubt that because 27 years ago, 28 years ago, a qualified engineer said it's going to be a problem unless you widen these roads, which they never did, apparently. And that's the information we have today. So based on the information I'm seeing today, I do not see how a traffic study is going to help that. And so for those reasons, I can't recommend that we go for the zoning classification.
Is there any other kind of study that's done by the engineer? Street study? I don't, I don't know the names of the studies that would help satisfy meeting the condition. I, I don't know how you can do that without knowing what the ingress and egress are, though.
Right. I, I guess what I, what it keeps coming back to is no matter what studies are done, the existing infrastructure can't be changed. And I disagree with that. I mean, yes, it can. Streets can be widened. There are additional turnoffs from Fair Trail or tray bind can be added to Temera and Kingsway to improve their conditions. I think there are a number of modifications that could be made to roadways if that's what needs to happen in order for, to allow access to this area. But I guess I would say that what was included in that in my staff report and in the application was a communication with the Green County Engineer who looked at this concept map and did not... Now, her record, she said, I'm going to need a traffic study, but nothing, she didn't say, oh, hold on, I can't believe you're thinking about this. This will never work. Nothing like that. And I've worked with Stephanie on a couple of projects now. She's very thorough in her estimations, and she's very conservative in terms of safety. And, I mean, she's working to improve safety at a number of intersections by adding roundabouts and doing all these things. It's one of her major concerns. So that, we submitted the concept map and asked specifically, does this ring any alarm bells for you? I know you can't look at it until you have a specific site plan, but with this, do you see any issues? And for her to say, I don't, I just would need to see a, a traffic impact study done when you get the specific site plan, that signals to me, again, we use the Green County Engineer as kind of de facto our engineer. There's a memorandum of understanding. Township does not have an engineer on staff. So the Green County Engineer acts as our engineer. When she does not, um, she hasn't not recommended, she hasn't, uh, said pump the brakes on this, that to me says that at least in her mind, a qualified engineer's mind who's looking at the situation right now, it is on the ground, does not have compunction with it being rezoned. She may have issue if we present a specific site plan that would be unfeasible.
Max, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but this is all speculation. And I, I mean, I would have liked to have heard from her, you know, on her own. And I mean, I appreciate where you're going with this. However, you know, it's, it's you talking to her, talking to us. So I, do we have anything in writing from her that's...
Yeah, I included emails.
So behind, with the emails, um, and, well, it's, uh... So, I mean, I appreciate, like I said, it's, but still, it's, it's, it's speculation. So I appreciate that, though.
So we're still stuck at item four, even with the traffic impact study. So let's move on to letter C. Proof of communication with the holders of easements for overhead electrical lines, noting the configuration of neighborhood takes such easements into consideration. Such configuration shall be reviewed and approved by the agencies deemedable by the Community Development and Risk Department. And I, I think we've already talked about that one. Any comments about it? Okay. D, an environmental impact study determining the existence of any endangered species or their habitats on the parcel and the detailed summary of techniques which will be employed when developing the site that it conforms to all laws, regulations pertaining to the existence of endangered species and their habitats. Where it's important to have the environmental impact study. I don't remember two, three, four, and possibly eight. This addressing any of those, correct?
Not insofar as traffic's concerned, but certainly these conditions, in my opinion, does help push the meter towards, you know, recommending on other issues that we've already talked about, so.
Well, it, it kind of gives me a little bit of a push toward number two, honestly. A detailed, do you have any comments on that, you guys?
I agree, that definitely for number two.
Okay. A detailed summary of the site development techniques which will be, will be employed to minimize impact on the wetlands and wooded areas or near the parcel and be reviewed and approved by agencies deemed applicable by Community Development and Risk Department. I, I feel the same way about that one as I do, uh, the environmental impact study.
I think the only other thing that might be missing from that is surrounding residential parcels. Stormwater concerns, well water concerns, any of those. What's that?
Aesthetics.
An aesthetics. I mean, that, those might be addressed from a specific site plan perspective, but...
Exactly. So that would be the question. Would that detailed site development technique be, um... You know, we know that it can be done in, in phase two. But does it need to be satisfied for phase one, step one?
I would say certainly, looking at aesthetics in some of the plans for the houses, I think, are an important step for the site plan when we get to sec, the second stage. But again, it probably also goes to criteria two, whether or not the developments for, you know, the general health and welfare of future residents. So I think they'd be there, too. But, um, yeah, so I, I think it's relevant to some more criteria, definitely.
Um, we have the overhead noise. Can you, do you think it's being picked up? Oh, okay. Okay. Lori, you think you're okay? Okay, perfect. So we are down to criteria number three then. And that's any plan submitted for this RPUD will be subject to the approval of any agency or entity with jurisdiction or authority over any aspect of the proposed development or any other entity at the discretion of the Community Development and Risk Department. And that's kind of like, you know, the catch-all, no-brainer. We know that that'll happen. So ladies and gentlemen, we are to the place where we had to look at the criteria against the recommendations. Is there some things that still haven't been met? Two, we're pushing, leaning a little bit closer to. Three, four, and eight still seem to be a little bit of a concern. Are there any, um, conditions that you think we could do at this point, uh, to satisfy needing those? Want to take each theme? We got density. If we put a condition on density, is that going to change traffic? Is that going to change the, uh, criteria number three or criteria number four? You're not going to get below 1,000, which is already record, right?
I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. And I'm ready to make my, if we are to vote today on whether to recommend this plan or not. And again, it's a recommendation. And we've been in the position where we recommended something, and the trustees said no, right? We all know that happens all the time. But, um, you know, I'm, you know, I've reviewed the evidence. I've reviewed everything fairly thoroughly. I looked at the new materials, and I think I'm comfortable with my decision and at least personally as to where I'd like to see the board go. So respectfully, I think that, you know, we're kind of winding down here. And we've discussed this back and forth amongst ourselves. And I think respectfully, I'd like to see if there's a motion, whether or not we recommend this to, um, to, uh, to, to the trustees.
So I had the fan over. Did you say you make the recommendation? Are we, are we making the motion at this point to approve it and then make a vote again with that? You want to move it that way?
Yeah. Well, why don't we do it this way? Lori, tell me if I'm doing this wrong, okay? I'd like to make a motion at this point to recommend the, the zoning application be granted by the Board of Trustees. I will make that motion right now. Then if someone seconds it, I think we can discuss that further if we want to do that motion now or... Recommendation to approve this application submitted by the... Yes, to the trustees, okay? I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
Yes, I'm sorry, just to be sticky. Move to recommend that this application be approved by the trustees with the conditions and requirements set forth in the staff report.
Do we want to wait until that fan stops? Just because Lori needs to get the record? We'll wait.
I also want to include those, the leach bed discussion that we had and add that.
I can't hear you.
Leach, the leach beds, leach beds.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. So I will try it a third time. I'd like to make a motion right now as to recommend that the Board of Trustees for the township approve this application subject to the staff, sorry, subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report. In addition to that, we would like a study done of the leach field if one is to be installed regarding its drainage and potential environmental impacts.
I need a second. We were kind of waiting. Did you get it, Lori? Okay.
Okay.
I, I think we should wait one more time. You might have to do this the fourth time. But I don't, but I don't know. But I don't know that it's the leach bed for, to be installed. It's the leach bed surrounding the properties. The impact of the development on surrounding leach beds. Oh. I didn't hear a thing. I think it's actually funny.
Clearly, I'm the most vulgar lawyer here. Okay. So just one more time for posterity. I would like to make a motion for the bo, the zoning commission to recommend approval of the instant zoning application subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report and an additional study as to the impact of the development on neighboring leach fields in the surrounding neighborhoods and subdivisions.
I need a second.
I second. Kristen Horton.
I've got it, Lori. Yeah.
Roll call? Yes.
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 No.
No. Okay, point of order. I need some assistance. Okay. So we are not recommending?
I, I believe if you fail, if that motion doesn't pass, I believe you would need to make another motion, if I'm not mistaken. John, you could tell me if I'm wrong here. It's hard without Dawn here, but...
No, I understand that. I mean, I could make a motion whether or not to not recommend, but then we'd get another two-to-two vote, and we'd be stuck again. So I think it would be, I'm not Dawn, but I'd like to say that if this vote split, the next vote's going to split. And I think that the result of that is a non-recommendation of this application.
I get you. Just trying to make sure we, uh, this doesn't get called back on the technicality. That's all, so.
Given that, this case is closed, then? We still have a few things left on our agenda. Um, I can say that the, uh... Minutes will be available when, when the staff say they're available. I'm not sure what their turnaround time will be on it. And next steps are, uh... For us to... Do we, do we just report off to you? Is that it?
In this case? The next steps would be for us to, um, bring your recommen, or your, uh...
Recommendations to the trustees.
Yeah, the recommendation to not approve this to the trustees.
So if I followed correctly, then that does go to that May 10th meeting, I thought I heard?
No. What we will do is ask on Monday, May 10th, for a hearing date, which at their, it will probably be at their next regularly scheduled trustees meeting, the 20, uh, 24th.
24th.
Um, again, that's most likely, but it's up to them to set the hearing date, so.
Okay. So if you couldn't hear, the recommendation will go forward. They will ask on May 10th that the trustees hear that. It'll be placed on their agenda for what we believe to be May 24th, but it's at that discretion of the trustees to put that on the agenda. Okay? All right. Moving forward on our agenda, which, uh, I think there's two items of business. The, um... First item was the text amendment for ease authorization. It's just basically repealing what we had done before.
That's correct.
Um, and that information was with your documents. And... Max, do you just want to give us an update on that?
Sure. So to give you guys a, a brief history of how that went, we originally asked for you to, um... disallow improvements in any reported easements. As we began administering that, we found that when it comes to utility easements, you're talking about about $1,600 to $1,800 in payments to Vectren and DPNL for them to even come and look at your easement to approve anything in it. Most of the utility easements we're finding are like five foot on either side of the, of the lot line. And we are not going to have our residents spend $1,800 to, to get their fences approved. So we then went to focus on administering in-drainage easements. We asked the trustees to suspend enforcement on the non-drainage-related easements. As you know, when you approved this language, we had a letter of support from Green County Soil and Water as the designee of the Green County Engineer. Unfortunately, the Green County Engineer has decided that she is not interested in, um... administering this kind of restriction, which would, it would require their assistance and backing. So without that, we are not able to do a case-by-case analysis of drain easements, which is why the language essentially allows for that. Look at it. If it's not going to cause any problems, we'll approve it. If it is going to cause problems, we'll deny it. So because we cannot do that, we are left with two choices, and, and they are either to deny all improvements in any drain easements. We're not going to do that. The only other choice is to go back to the way it was, which is currently to allow improvements in drain easements. The only other choice is to go back to the way it was, which is currently to allow improvements in drainage easements. Um, so that's what I'm asking for you to move so that I can bring that recommendation to Green County Regional Planning and, and set through the same process as we did when we asked for the language in the beginning. Um, it would likely then be in front of you at the June hearing.
So Max, since you know exactly what you're asking for, I'm gonna move that we let Max do what he wants to do.
Thank you.
Need a second.
Second?
Okay, we're ready.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are our minutes. There were several series of minutes that need to be approved. Um, the first, I believe, sorry, I gotta flip to it. Lori, do you have the dates?
I have March 1st, 2018.
That was March 1st, 2018. Just in case you can't hear from over there, sorry. December 3rd, 2020.
Okay. So, when you looked at that list, was there anybody who's on this board right now that wasn't at any of those meetings? Well, given that, accept them, I mean, I've, we, we looked at them on email, so. Well, well, first, before we move to that, he's asking what the topic was at that meeting. You did. Yes. Okay, so motion to accept that, the minutes from March 18th.
I have to make the motion. Yeah, motion to accept. March 8th, or March 2018.
Yeah, second, yes, I approve. Yes. Okay, the next set of them, please. Oh, we were all there. Is that the one that has her name spelled incorrectly? Okay, for the record. You fixed it? Okay. Oh, I remember them. And so is that graph that they, um, did part of at min- those minutes? Do you remember, they did like a little presentation? Put it in there? Okay, perfect. I think it's important to have. Yeah, I just remember that graph going like this, yeah. It was cool, it was cool.
I will make a motion to accept the December, right, 2020 minutes.
Yes. We saw that, so, I don't know how you're all feeling, but I'd like to wait and do those with these when we do them all together. Are you guys good with that? Okay. Got it, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I lost my agenda, but I think we just covered the entire thing, didn't we? Is there anything else withstanding that was on there?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I did also request that we, um, try to schedule a work session. We're working on an omnibus update to the township zoning resolution. We're talking smaller changes, grammar, spelling, uh, unclear meaning, things like that. We're not talking major policy changes here. There's a lot of work to be done on that front, it's been a long time since there's been an omnibus update. Um, my initial ask, I believe, was for the middle of this month. I'm open to whenever the commission would like to meet again to discuss this. If they don't wanna discuss this, that's okay too, but I'd really appreciate your input on this project, especially since you have to approve it, so. I would like to do it in two weeks. Um, midway between this, uh, this meeting and the upcoming June meeting.
I can't do that, unfortunately, so.
Okay.
I, I don't know the numbers, the date.
Sure.
20th? Oh.
Is there a better, it doesn't have to be on a Thursday, it doesn't ha- it can be on any day of the week, any time?
I will be out of town the 23rd through the 27th of May.
Okay, let's see here, 23rd through 27th. So, what about the week of the 17th, then? Just not that Thursday, okay, so, how about Wednesday, the 19th?
I can do any day but Wednesday, the 19th. I have a board meeting at the Woodhaven Pool, so, sorry.
How about Tuesday, the 18th? That's the two yeses for Tuesday, the 18th. Three? We don't have to do it 7:30, we can do it earlier, later, whatever works for everybody.
We don't have to have a quorum, so it's okay if you-
And nor is it public, nor do I have to advertise it. This is literally just us getting together to talk about this.
This is just-
Can we eat pizza?
All right. How about Monday, the 17th? That, we're all good on Monday, the 17th in the evening? What, around seven, 7:30, okay. 7:30, Monday, the 17th.
And you will send an e-
I mean, that's okay.
You'll send an email to remind us, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, I will communicate this with you, I'll send the meeting invites and all that kinda stuff. 7:30.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you this. Is it a, I know we have resumed back face-to-face, but is that one of those things that might go faster if we're videoing?
It's up to you, if you, I mean, I'm comfortable either way, so whichever-
Me too, I don't really care, I was just trying to make it efficient, that's all.
My, my personal feeling is that work like this is best, I mean, there are some great things about video conferencing, but there is no substitute for us in the room together talking to one another.
I do not wanna do any more video conferencing. Please.
Yep. All right, excellent. I will, then we will schedule it for the, uh, trustees' meeting room, if that's good with everybody. Um, I will send out meeting invites probably tomorrow in the afternoon. That, I believe, is the rest of the agenda, thank you. Uh, you'll probably still need to close the meeting and stuff, thank you so much.
I would like to second that emotion, no, that motion. I.
Thank you.